Good morning, welcome to Harden County Commissioners Court. Today is Tuesday, December twenty-second, two thousand and twenty. It is ten a.m. and all members of the court are present. We have Commissioner Kirkendall who was up here virtually this morning. Good morning Commissioner, can you hear me okay?
Good morning, can you hear me Judge?
Yes sir, I hear you. Alright, so the meeting is called to order. If everyone will please rise to the invocation by Commissioner Kirkendall.
Dear Heavenly Father, we come before you today and Lord, we're thankful for this beautiful day. We're thankful for our health and our life. Lord, we lift up our region, Lord, as we have seen the positivity rates go up in our region. And Father, we just pray for mercy and grace, but we pray for safety, Lord, as we navigate these holidays with the spike in this COVID-nineteen coronavirus. But we want to celebrate our DA today, God David, as Lord, as he gets ready to retire. We thank you for his life's commitment to justice and to serving the citizens of Harden County. We pray that you bless him all the days of his life. Father, we thank you, Lord, for his family sharing this with the lives of his Harden County family. Lord, we're gonna miss him, we ask you to bless him. We ask these things in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Commissioner. I've got to advance a couple of slides here, so we'll move on to the next one. Got a few items of business to take care of and we're gonna recognize Mr. Sheffield. First is item number three, approve the amendments of the December eighth, two thousand and twenty regular meeting as presented by Glenn Dawson.
So moved.
Second. A motion by Commissioner Pelt, seconded by Commissioner Roberts, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Number four, consider approval of request to cancel all registered claims from December eighth, two thousand and twenty, and approval of cash statement as presented by the county treasurer, Ms. David McWilliams. Good morning, Ms. McWilliams.
Good morning. I'm asking the court to release me of the liability of one million, two hundred and seventy-two thousand, nine hundred and forty-four dollars and forty-six cents. On our cash report and general checking, we have ten million, one hundred and forty-three thousand, nine hundred dollars and seventy-four cents. In tax pool, we have three hundred, twenty-one dollars and nine cents for a total in cash funds of ten million, one hundred and forty-four thousand, two hundred and twenty-one dollars and eighty-three cents.
So moved.
Second. A motion by Commissioner Roberts, seconded by Commissioner Pelt, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Ms. McWilliams. Number five, authorization to pay county bills as presented by Angela Gore, county auditor. Good morning, Ms. Gore.
Good morning. The pre-approved expenditures for December the ninth of sixteen thousand, eight hundred and seventy-one dollars and ninety-five cents. Pre-approved expenditures for December the fourteenth, twenty-seventeenth, for nine hundred and fifty-one thousand, forty-two dollars and ninety-seven cents. The expenditures for Commissioners Court today are three hundred and forty-eight thousand, fifty-eight dollars and forty-five cents. The list of an additional bill is to E-three for our second payment of our H-five upgrades is two hundred and fifteen thousand, three hundred and eighty-four dollars and twenty-nine cents. For a total expenditures and transfers of one million, five hundred and thirty-one thousand, three hundred and fifty-seven dollars and forty-six cents. Gross payroll for December the seventeenth was five hundred and twenty thousand, two hundred and seventy dollars and forty cents. And the total transfers for that payroll is eight hundred and thirty-four thousand, two hundred and four dollars and eighty-six cents.
Move, play the count of eight.
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Cooper, seconded by Commissioner Roberts, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Gore. Number six, we're gonna recognize David Sheffield for thirty years of dedicated service to Harden County as a county attorney, assistant district attorney, and the district attorney, and wish him well on his retirement. Mr. Sheffield, will you come on up?
Thank you, I'm here to keep y'all to my two weeks notice. I'm not changing my mind.
Two weeks notice huh? Denied.
It is my great honor to come up here today and to recognize a legend in Harden County, David Sheffield. David has done an excellent job for this county for thirty years. I had no idea, it was thirty years, but it says so right here, thirty years in Harden County as a county attorney, assistant DA, and then the DA. And you've been the DA for, is it twelve years or?
Been twelve.
Twelve years, after those two weeks. And so it is my honor to stand up here today on behalf of Commissioners Court and recognize Mr. Sheffield for his thirty years. And I hope that you'll come back and continue the races that you hold in the main hallway out here every so often.
Soon as Greg Abbott comes back.
Right. We'll see what we get here. But hopefully there'll be some others that'll come up and speak, but it's just been an honor to work with you. And on behalf of the citizens of Harden County, we appreciate everything that you've done for this county. Just the fact that you get up and come up here every single day and work and have that office open and make sure that the citizens are taken care of with regards to justice and District Attorney's Office is a testament, and we appreciate you very much.
Thank you, the honor is all mine. It's been a fantastic bunch of people working with you. You've done a tremendous job, Judge, through Commissioners Court, and Commissioners, Mr. Cooper, Mr. Kirkendall, Mr. Pelt, Mr. Roberts, all of you. In fact, Mr. Pelt, I was told we're both essential employees. Now we're essentially g脓. But anyway, I appreciate all the help and working with so many people. Kevin, twenty-seven years with you, as Henry Barford always said, oh, that's pretty good. But you guys have all been fantastic. The county's been fantastic to me. I hope I've been able to give back just a little bit of what the county has given me. The judge Thomas, you came along, I appreciate the access you give us to the courts. There's no way we would've gotten those maximum sentences or life sentences at all to kind of tame this rough county from time to time. And everybody else out there, Rebecca, congratulations, you guys did an awesome job. I know that because I've seen you and watched you all these many years. So, with that, the bugs, appreciate you too, but more than ever after I'll count the DA.
Before you go away, I know the representative White wants to come up and say a few words, and anybody else who wants to, say a moment.
Thank you so much Judge, and let me just take this off, I guess White's not looking at this. I guess my wife's not looking. Okay, hey look, thank you so much for your service, and we were just honored to have the opportunity to serve with you, along with you, on behalf of the great folks here in Harden County. Here's just a couple of mementos for me. I don't know if you're gonna be going to any events where you're gonna have to, you know, wear cuff links and whatnot, but when you do, I've got some here with the Texas Star there, and wear those with pride and honor. And just man, just thank you for your service, thirty years in public service, that's a great run.
Thank you so much, it's very thoughtful.
Yes sir, thank you.
We appreciate it.
Yes sir.
I do have, I do have just a couple of thank yous that matter the most. My parents wouldn't have been anything without you. And my wife, my wife had to be neither the dumbest or greatest character in the world to marry me.
Dumb.
Forty-two years ago, I went into Iowa as a last ditch effort to stay alive. And that's why I say that I'm the longest living person in hospice. But they gave me an opportunity that so many people would've given up on. So, they deserved the recognition. And that's all I have.
If anybody else would like to say anything, you're welcome to do so, Commissioner?
Yes Judge, I guess I'll tell off on my age, but I went to school with Mr. Sheffield. He's a young man by the way. I actually graduated with his sister and he was a couple of years ahead of us, but I always held him to the highest regard until I started sitting out here with Billy Payne drinking coffee, and he told some very, I don't know if I believe him or not, stories about you, but anyway, I wish you good luck on your retirement, and you've done a great job for the county, and thank you.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Pelt?
Yes sir, in nineteen ninety-six, David and Ed Kane and I were campaigning together for office. David was already working for the county, and I think David would agree, it's a lot more fun to retire than it was to campaign for the office. I wish him, I wish him well, and Robert didn't stand up, but his dad's in the back, and I knew Robert many years before I knew David, so that may tell something about my age, but anyway, good luck to you.
Thank you for this assistance and contributions to the county, Commissioner.
Mr. Roberts?
Well, David and I go way back, actually our families go way back, all the way to the Washington Crossing, the Potomac. David and I, my great-great-great-great-grandfather was in the boat with George Washington going across the Potomac. The Robertses and the Shefffields all came here from Georgia together, and when I found that out, I brought it to David. Of course, I worked for Robert for years and got to show him some of the stuff, it's really interesting, but working with David has been a pleasure. When I was in law enforcement, it was a pleasure, and I hate to see you go buddy, but I know you're gonna have a good time otherwise.
Well, I appreciate that Commissioner.
No problem cuz.
Mr. Williford, come on up.
As long as customers aren't in the public speaking, I've worked for David for nineteen years, and he's been my friend way, way before that. But I'm gonna tell you what a pleasure it's been. He'd get up every day, he'd come to work, he set a great example. He's got the highest ethics of any human being I've ever walked with. He does the right, has always done, the right thing because it's the right thing, without giving into pressure, without getting into the things that come along with the job, and you've set an example for a whole bunch of us, and I'm honored for that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes sir.
I'd like to thank all y'all for putting up with him. And I haven't seen no fella over here, I believe, Danny Saunders?
Yes sir.
They grew up together, and I'll tell you one thing, I never thought we'd ever get those two cleaned up enough to go eat. David and Danny, we lived off a house in Queens, and they'd get out there and mud puddle, and they'd have to spit so you'd see where their mouths were. And I ran it and find out they're both up here like this, that's an honor.
Yes sir.
I'll say one thing about, I campaigned for him real hard there, and a lady told me, she told me what he does, and a lady told me, she said, well, I said, I don't, I'd like to vote for him, she said, I don't know if he's able to handle the job. And I said, ma'am, I've never known a lawyer should do two things, and that's sit and argue, and that's the only thing David can do. She said, I'll vote for him, I said, I'm gone. Thank you all.
Thank you Robert.
Anybody else wanna say anything? I just knew Robert Pegg was gonna say something, but I guess not.
I'll hear you, I'll hear you.
I figured. David, we just thank you, and we wish you the very best, and hopefully you won't be a stranger.
Thank y'all all, very much.
Yes sir.
But in about a month, I'm gonna send him back to y'all. At least I, y'all, I can do janitorial work.
It'll be time to start raking leaves for long, we'll hook up something to his machine there. Representative White, I think you also wanted to recognize Commissioner Pelt.
Yes sir, thank you so much.
Yes sir.
I think the last time you had one of these meetings, I think I was in Austin, I was somewhere. Days are, days are beginning to run. Commissioner Pelt, look, I just have a few things for you, and I just want to know that-
Any money?
We're still in the legislature, so the answer's no, okay? Alright, and by the way, how you doing there Chris, I didn't get to holler at you when I first came up, but Commissioner, it's been absolute, absolute pleasure watching you in action. I still remember the call you gave me a few years ago about the Corps of Engineers had guns at the doorway when you were going down there to fight for your community. Apparently you won that, that bout, I think some things have happened over the past few years, but just a great, great run. You know, the other day when I was looking at your bio, you started working out in oil fields as a roughneck in nineteen sixty-four. I was born in nineteen sixty-four, so a lot of things were going on in nineteen sixty-four. So, did I leave something? I definitely know your, your love for the state as well, and here's a Texas flag that was flown over your state Capitol, and, and the members of the legislature, there are quite a few that know you on the House floor, and they do also appreciate your, your work. And just a personal one from me is, I don't know how many times you're gonna be getting in a, in a shirt and in a tuxedo over the next few years.
Not often.
Not often, okay, alright, but here, here's a pair of cuff links there.
I appreciate, I'll put it on and Vicki can take a picture of me.
Okay, alright, alright, but Commissioner, it's been a great run, and I'm honored to, it's been, I've been very proud to work with you and honored to represent you, and Judge, thank you for the, and Commissioners, thank you for the leisure of the court for me to come and do this.
Absolutely.
Thank you Representative White.
Thank you so much for your work as well.
I'd like to say one word about Representative White. It's been a number of years ago, I can't remember how many, that I was working with a group called Concerned Citizens, trying to get a call for a constitutional convention to correct some of the problems in Washington that this group felt needed to be corrected, and I'd written a little book, and I went up, Vicki and I went to Austin, and Representative was counting enough that before the session, they were gonna discuss it and vote on it, well, he had his staff to put a copy of that book on every representative's desk, and so Vicki and I sat in the gallery and they debated it for a while, and then they voted, and Strauss, I believe, was the Speaker of the House, and he wrapped the gavel and ruled that it had failed. It got a majority, but it didn't get two-thirds.
Yeah.
And so Vicki and I left Austin disappointed and got a call on the way from Representative White. The parliamentarian, I guess, had informed him after the session was over that a call for a constitutional convention by the states only required a simple majority and not a two-thirds. And so it passed, but the Senate killed it that year, but it later passed, and Texas is on, on the record as a call, and those things stay open until, Representative White, I appreciate you.
Thank you sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Everybody's welcome to stay, or if you'd like to leave, you can, if you just came for Mr. Sheffield. If you want to stay, you're welcome to stay. Thank y'all for being here.
Thank y'all.
I thought the judge was gonna speak.
No, I, every time I do, I get all teary-eyed. You know what I would say?
Thank y'all again for coming. Next is item number seven, consider authorization for county judge to sign real property lease agreement between the city of Sour Lake and Harden County for office space for the Justice of the Peace Precinct Four, a request made by Judge Ames.
So moved.
Second. A motion by Commissioner Pelt, seconded by Commissioner Cooper. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Judge, you're moving January first, is that right?
That's where the students put floors down.
Okay.
They'll be behind, it'll be hopefully about the middle of January, I'll keep y'all informed.
Okay, well let us know when it's ready, I want to come see you.
Yes sir.
Congratulations too. Yes sir.
And Amanda's and all this are awesome.
Yes sir, I think she's supposed to bring something up here before long to do the same thing. Right, there you are.
Sure.
Okay. Number eight, consider authorization of request by the county attorney to reallocate twelve thousand dollars in pre-trial diversion funds as follows. Seven thousand, two hundred dollars in salary plus benefits from the Assistant County Number Two, which is currently Mr. Minnick, to the Assistant County Attorney Number One, which is Mr. Dutton, leaving four thousand, eight hundred dollars in salary plus benefits for the new Assistant County Attorney Number Two, yet to be hired, or I think maybe that's in the works, and that will be effective as of January first, two thousand and twenty-one.
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Pelt, seconded by Commissioner Roberts. This is money that's already being allocated out of the pre-trial diversion program, you're just gonna re-divide it after January first. Any other discussion or questions? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number nine, consider request for authorization to pay an invoice. It's invoice number two-two-three-one-seven, DePayne's Body Shop Incorporated, and the amount of three thousand, forty-eight dollars and five cents for repairs to the sheriff's office vehicle number nine-eight-five-three. I have confirmed the money is in the budget, it is last year's budget, and that is, that is where the sheriffs want to charge this invoice to.
So moved.
Second. A motion by Commissioner Cooper, seconded by Commissioner Pelt, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Number ten, Ms. Pace, good morning ma'am, how are you?
Good morning y'all.
Harden County Agri-Life Extension Agent Katie Pace will provide a highlight of the year to Commissioners Court as required by the Texas A&amp;M Agri-Life Extension Service.
In your packet, you should have three pages from us. One is our executive summary, which if you want to go back and read that later, I'll highlight some of it, not all of it. It's something you can go back, then I decided to do a little by the numbers, I'm a very visual person, and to me, this works out a whole lot better when I look at it and just grab things as I go. First off, it's my year in the county, and officially been here a year, and I want to thank y'all again for allowing me to have this position. I absolutely love it, it's been an interesting year to come in, but it's been fun, it's been really fun.
We appreciate you.
Thank you. The first thing that we'll go ahead and highlight was our biggest program this year that we actually got to in person, and that was our hunter education. We had forty-eight people that I got to certify in hunter education, and tons more that wanted to come. Agri-Life had us capped at fifty people per meeting, so we had to keep that down. We had planned to do a couple more, and with restrictions, that just kind of didn't get to come to fruition. So, I know next year that I need to do about three though, because I had calls and calls about it. We did do one thing that is not included on here, we did a fly study with Plumberton ISD, which is where Agri-Life provides us all the materials, and we go out and test different fly mates. We did it at the Ag Barn there, so that was a help to the Ag teachers. Fred is the next thing that we talked about, which is, or did, which is families reading every day. We implemented that, Sillsby High School, we had kids from their intro to education class that did it to where they could really kind of understand whenever they go out into the classroom, what they're trying to get kids to do. After that, we did about fourteen community service projects this year, which is good concerning everything that went on. We actually contributed about three thousand dollars to the community in whole. Our most recent one is we did with Harden County Schroll, we provided items for her, for her Christmas, Christmas baskets that she did. The thing that I'm most excited about is we started a vet science program this year. It is in cooperation with Liberty County, Orange County, and Jefferson County, and we have thirty-three kids in it. We were gonna start in September, and the hurricane delayed us till October, it's been a great year. And we are providing kids an opportunity to get certified and be a veterinary assistant. They'll be certified by the Texas Board of Veterinary Medicine whenever they're done with the program. It's a three-year program, we have some kids that are trying to get it done faster, so they're doing it in two years, because once you reach eighteen, it's hard for us to keep you in 4H and keep you doing things. Right now, I think we have about ten vets in the area that are on board with us and said, we don't care about everything, go ahead and come in. So, we're working on getting more vets so that we'll have enough places for the kiddos to go. We did work on doing the Texas Youth Hunting Program this year, I am now a certified hunt master, so is my husband. We are working on getting some ranches that'll cooperate with us, they don't have to be in Harden County. We can go out of the county, and what it is, is it provides a hunting opportunity for the youth here that aren't gonna get that otherwise. So, we've been working on a couple places, we'd like to do one kind of closer to home, and then one that's kind of farther away. So, if y'all know anybody that might be willing to do that, that has a ranch, we're more than happy to listen to that. We've also worked on shooting sports, we've got two coaches that are now certified to do archery here in Orange County. That was the easiest one to tackle first, because whenever we get into shooting sports, you have to have the equipment for it, and archery costs the least to get started with. And then our COVID-nineteen response, we've delivered PPE for the area daycares, we've delivered hand sanitizer and masks and everything for polling places, and we've really kind of assisted wherever we could, and we've done a couple community service events for that. The one thing, if you'll look on your by the numbers, which was this one, that I'm excited that we had over seven thousand volunteer hours that got contributed this year, which in this year's still pretty crazy, which if you put that as a value into the economy for Harden County, that's about a hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars. And not only that, our economic impact for the programs that we were still able to do was about almost ten thousand dollars, about twenty dollars shy of that. So, we reached thirty-two hundred people this year through total in-person and virtual events. That doesn't include anybody that we had a phone conversation with that came into my office or I completed a site visit with. So, I'm happy that that was as good as it was for this year. Two things that aren't on there, Tammy, I nominated her for a Excellence in Service Award through the State 4H, and she won it. She was one of three people in the state of Texas to get it, so I'm very proud about that, and I graduated with my masters Saturday.
Well, congratulations.
So, I'm officially done with that, and now I might get my doctorate, I don't know, we'll see.
I can tell you this, it's a little bit easier getting a masters than it is a doctor. It took me twice as long as it should have to get mine, so, good luck, good luck.
I don't know, my husband keeps telling me, and I keep going, ah, I don't know, we'll see.
What was your doctor then? What's your doctor then?
This lady's got the floor right now.
Oh, okay.
I'm just glad we're sitting in the elevator.
Yeah.
But that's all I have, if you have any questions for me, I'll gladly answer them.
I just want to say that I really appreciate all the work you're doing, I also appreciate that nomination you made of Tammy. She does a great job with 4H, glad to see that she won that award.
I wish I was her.
Tammy has been the extension agent a couple of times since I've been here, which is almost six years because of the turnover, but when we hired you, you promised me you were going nowhere, so that's why we're glad to see you're interested in this job.
I'm sure what she would do to me.
But I really, really appreciate how far y'all have both brought that program over the past year, very much.
Yeah, I would like to say I think Tammy's done, I mean, Katie's done a very good job with it, and I've heard a lot of good comments, I haven't heard any bad comments, she works real well with the schools and these 4H chapters, and here in Harden County, that's really the basis of keeping a county agent is your youth activities and stuff, and it's very important. And it's very important that we keep one, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Very much. Anybody else? Alright, great program and, and uh, we really appreciate the uh, update.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is item number eleven, permission to solicit bids for overlaying eight hundred feet of park road at the Park Road Bridge, two hundred feet of park road at Ball Park Road, twelve hundred feet of park road leading into Hardin County Veterans Park, and two thousand six hundred forty feet of Creekwood Street at Park Road located in precincts three and four.
So moved.
Second.
And motion by Commissioner Pell, seconded by Commissioner Cooper. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number twelve, report results and provide recommendation from the Health Director pertaining to qualification statements received for licensed pharmacists for Hardin County Health Department and possible permission to hire qualified licensed pharmacists. This is a contract labor position funded by the immunization grant number five oh five, five oh three, four eight six. And if approved, also grant permission for the county judge to sign the agreement. Ms. Simmons, good morning.
Good morning. Qualification statements were opened on December seventeenth, twenty twenty at two P M in the purchasing department for an office. Myself and Erica Singletary were present. We only received one and it was from Dana A. Johnson. Ms. Whitley has verified that she is licensed and qualified for the position.
Ms. Whitley, is it your recommendation to uh, provide this contract labor position to Dana A. Johnson?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Whitley.
So moved.
Second.
And motion by Commissioner Pell, seconded by Commissioner Roberts. Any discussion?
Yes.
Yes, sir, Commissioner Cooper?
Uh, Ms. uh, Whitley, I'm, this is new to all of us, I guess, uh, due to COVID, but uh, has other counties done this? That you know of?
With the immunization program, we have to have uh, pharmacists, uh, a contractual pharmacist just to make sure that the vaccines are not expired if there's any recalls that are responsible for this. And every immunization program has a contractual pharmacist.
Where, where is uh, Ms. Johnson out of?
She's out of Lawsbryans.
A local, though?
No, Lawsbryans in Beaumont.
Beaumont, thank you, that's.
And this position's for Orange and Hardin County?
It's for Orange only because of the COVID vaccine, yes. It'll be in both locations.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passing unanimously. Item number thirteen, consider authorization of request by the Health Director, Sharon Whitley, for an extension of her paid time off past her anniversary date of January seventh, two thousand twenty-one. Ms. Whitley has been unable to use her time due to the demand for her to be on duty throughout the COVID-nineteen pandemic. We have, I'm sorry, Mr. Cooper's made a motion.
I second.
And a second by Commissioner Roberts. We have a memo from uh, Ms. Whitley and it shows that she's got thirty-nine hours of vacation time, but I think she's used eight hours since then. So, she has thirty-one hours of vacation and uh, sixteen hours of personal leave. And Commissioner, uh, are you just, is your motion for her to carry it over for the entire year? Or for, uh, do you have a certain amount of time? My recommendation would be just let her carry it over for the next year.
I would, yeah, that, that sounded good because who knows what we're gonna face this year?
Right.
But, and we can extend it, but y'all for a year.
Okay, and Commissioner Roberts seconds that motion. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number fourteen, consider authorization for county judge to execute contract with EDOC Technologies Incorporated for installation of software for the district clerk, district courts, county clerk, and county court pursuant to vendors December settled two thousand twenty proposal. One thing I want to call everyone's attention quickly is that we have a hundred and fifty thousand in the budget for this. If you look at the proposal, the total, it's on the very back of a page of that packet. The total for all, uh, it's actually, it's, it's the clerk software, of course, you just get to take advantage of it. So, it's the district clerk and the county clerk, it's for two hundred and four thousand. We are going to save enough money if we can get this installed by the end of uh, May. We will save enough money on our current vendor to pay the difference, that uh, fifty-four thousand dollars. If we don't quite have enough to make it up, I've talked to Mrs. Austin about the possibility that she may have some preservation funds available to help make the difference and she's committed to doing that, which we appreciate. So, I wanted to make sure we got that on the record.
It will approve.
And motion by Commissioner Pell, seconded by Commissioner Cooper to approve the contract. And this has been reviewed by the county attorney as well. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passing unanimously. Next is discussion only of any item not on the agenda without taking any action. Is there any official present that would like to say anything? Yes, ma'am, Ms. Cook? Good morning.
Good morning. Merry Christmas, everybody.
Merry Christmas.
Um, on the agenda, uh, number seven, which I keep for, I just wanna thank the city of Sauer Lake, they have, had asked us to come as well and have a satellite office there. We would love to do that. Judge Ames has been very supportive of that idea as well. Uh, at this time, the state is, um, has denied us, you know, more equipment. So, we will keep on. I think the city of Sauer Lake, the citizens would appreciate having a satellite office over there for the tax office. Um, at this time, it's just, it's not gonna happen. But I did wanna say how much I appreciate City Manager, uh, Mr. Provost, and the mayor, Mr. Robinson, and Judge Ames for, for their support on it. And hopefully one day the state will let go of some of it and let us have some equipment.
You should've brought that up while the representative was here.
Yeah. Another question.
Well, you, you know, we have that, but.
Yes, ma'am.
I haven't, and I'm sure it's because of COVID, but I haven't touched base with you lately. Where do we stand on having your people cross tr- uh, trained on the DPS side?
DPS, the driver's license?
Yes.
Well, that just is, just like this, there's no funds, the state's not gonna give us any funds for.
Right, we knew that.
Right.
I think the last time that uh, I was involved in it, uh, talked to you, you didn't have the personnel to ship them somewhere else, we was looking at them to come here and give us the training, but we haven't heard anything of that.
We haven't gone forward with that at all with all the COVID and trying to keep our staff and everybody, so. But thank you, I, I wish, but we need that, Hardin County needs.
Well, I get, that's one of the main things I get hit on all the time with about the driver's license.
Right, we need that. Our office needs that, but for identification purposes for people that have lost their license or, or that, hopefully.
Maybe when things uh, get back to normal or semi-normal, we can uh, look into what we need to do.
I hope so.
I know the legislature's coming back in January, aren't they?
Yes, sir, and I was just gonna say that the Senator Nichols and Representative White are both in uh, support of putting a driver's license office in Hardin, Hardin County. So, my hope is that if it doesn't happen in this session, then we go back to Plan B with Ms. Cook and see what we can do, but.
Thank you.
They both comfortable that it will happen prior to all the money the state has had to spend on COVID, so I think it's up in the air now. But they have permitted us to continue to support that.
We'll do what we can whenever the time comes.
Yes, ma'am. And uh, you're in the process of getting that drive-through reopened, so we're just waiting on the vendor, right?
We are for that too, we are for that. We do have a, a station in our office that we can transfer over to the window because they denied us an extra one for the window, for the drive-through. So, but we do have a station that we can move. Erin has offered to help us with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else from anyone? Ms. McWilliams?
I wanted to say that I did um, hear from the bank, uh, John Morrell, our representative, has left Compass Bank and we finally have a new representative, this, I can't think of his name right this minute. But in speaking with him on Friday, he did advise me that they would not be interested in renewing our contract and kinda knew that would be coming. So, in the next few months, we'll be going through that process again of going out on a new contract, yeah.
I would recommend uh, the judge appointing a committee and putting Mr. Pell over that committee, so.
I think I would decline that.
I'm aware that, that that is coming, our contract ends in April, so we'll, we'll be in that process again.
Thank you. Anybody else have anything? I've got uh, two things I wanna say. It looks like Commissioner Kirkendall may wanna speak. Go ahead, sir.
How much I appreciate you, I'll go help you out in the last quarter. But uh, but then I just, I would thank you, sorry I couldn't be the person today to tell you bye, but appreciate you very much.
Were you able to hear me?
I can't hear you.
Alright, he was just letting you know how much he appreciated getting to work with you.
Well, I appreciate working with him.
And I, I wanna echo that as well, it's your last regular meeting. Uh, I'm gonna break it to the Commissioners now that we might need to meet again before the end of the year. Uh, depending on whether or not the CARES Act funds got uh, extended, we don't know that yet out of the vote that happened last night. But if that did not get extended, uh, the score has asked us to meet on December twenty-ninth to approve those final uh, bills from the vendors uh, that we have for the HVAC system and any other bills for anything else that's CARES Act related. So, uh, hopefully by Monday, I'll have an answer on that. Actually, I'll, I'll need to know by tomorrow. And uh, if not, we'll have to post the agenda and set a meeting for the twenty-ninth. But of course, anybody can join virtually or come in person. So, you might have one more.
That's fine.
If you want to, if not, you can say no. But uh, as long as we can get a quorum, we can take care of that if needed. I'm hoping that it got extended and that won't be necessary, but I'll let everybody know. But uh, it has been a great honor to work with you.
Been a great honor working with this court.
Learned a lot from you and I'm gonna try to remember everything that I've learned, so I don't have to bug you anymore.
It won't be hard.
But uh, we appreciate all that you've done for Hardin County and, and just wish you the very best on your retirement.
Well, I wish the court the best and I wish Hardin County the best. Hardin County's got the best group of elected officials, appointed officials and employees, I believe, in the state. And uh, the people in Hardin County, I think, appreciate it and uh, I think they're in good hands.
Thank you. Mr. Cooper, you gonna say anything?
Mr. Roberts?
One final thing, is that on uh, January first at ten o'clock, I'll be up here to swear any of the newly elected officials or anybody that's been re-elected that wants to be sworn in on the first. And then, of course, on the fourth at ten A M, we'll have a special meeting and have a swearing-in ceremony and anybody that swears in on the first is welcome to participate in that ceremony as well. And I'll get that agenda ready and send it out to everybody and make sure that it looks like you want it. Other than that, I don't have anything else.
Over adjourned.
Second.
And motion by Commissioner Pell to adjourn, seconded by Commissioner Cooper. All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.